The flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the ring of honor for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda here is some public information on the water district. You will. Eric, you want to?
Absolutely. So, reason we're here tonight, or one reason we're here is to go over the, I guess, the proposed changes to Water District 12. So, Water District 12 was previously formed, I forget, probably two years ago now, I just didn't have the exact date. Previously formed, funded by USDA Rural Development. So, in better words, there's a handout up here that has the cost and a map on it. If you don't have it, grab it on the way out. But originally, this was a 28,450 linear feet water main project. The estimated construction cost, or total project cost, was 3.414 million. The USDA provided the town a grant of 1.639 million, and combined with a county contribution of 416,000, it changed the net local share, so the share for the people in the district was 1.35 million. So, when this district was formed, it was formed by petition process. The petition was circulated by residents within the district, presented to the town board for approval. At the time, there was a public hearing where the town board listened to any comments from the public, and the town board at that time felt, based on the petition, based on the public input, it was favorable to form the water district. So, since the water district was formed, we have also bid the project, but that was back in May. And as we expected, due to the COVID supply chain issues, prices of everything, as you know, has gone up immensely. So, when we bid the project, it was realized that we were really just over a million dollars, over budget. So, what the town elected to do was place the bids on hold, search for some additional grant funding. So, they worked with Municipal Solutions to submit a, what they call a Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant application. The town was successful with that grant award, so they were awarded an additional grant from the New York State Department of Facility Corporation of 1.065 million dollars. So, that essentially bridges the gap to get us to the point we are today. So, what you have on this handout, again, there's a map on the back that kind of shows the project area, a lot of people aren't sure familiar with it, but it's just going to reiterate what it is. But the cost summary sheet here reflects the original budget. It also reflects two options. The option that's being proposed is Option 2, which is the 8 and 12 inch PVC water main. So, running down through some of the additional numbers on the original budget, some of the important aspects for you would be the terminal loan. So, this is a 38-year loan from the USDA Rural Development, again, in the amount of 1.353 million dollars. Low interest rate, though, so thankfully, when this project was funded, it was a period when the interest rates were extremely low, so we're 1.357%. Ultimately, based on the number of units in the district, so units are based on a single-family house is one unit, commercial properties are assessed a unit based on the equivalency to a single-family unit, vacant developable lots are assessed half a unit, and vacant lots that are undevelopable are charged a tenth of a unit. So, ultimately, there was 91 units calculated with the original budget, and that resulted in an annual debt service of approximately 505 dollars per year. So, that amount would be placed on everybody's tax bill, so if you're, again, if you're a single-family home, one unit, so you'd see that line item on your tax bill for 505 dollars a year. And again, that just looks, not to reiterate, but that does go with the property, so it doesn't go with the property owner, so if you move, it stays with that property. The additional costs that are important to know are the water usage. So, you'll have the debt component, you'll also have a water usage component. So, there's several components related to water usage, though. There's a water rate from the Monroe County Water Authority, which is $3.72 per thousand gallons. There's a surcharge from Genesee County, and that surcharge is related to the infrastructure that the county has installed to make water available to the residents of Genesee County, and that's a dollar twenty per thousand gallons. And then, a meter charge from the Monroe County Water Authority of 23 cents per day. So, when you sum those numbers up, based on what we see as the typical single-family household using 60,000 gallons a year, that equates to just under 380 dollars a year. So, when we formed this district originally, we essentially told the public 885 dollars was the estimated annual contribution for the typical single-family homeowner. So, that's essentially what people voted on with the petition format, and that's how the district was formed. So, now we'll kind of look at where we are today, which is at Option 2. And really, the only change, because we were able to get that additional grant funding from, for the Wea Grant, is related to a capital reserve fund. So, kind of again, going from top to bottom, you'll see the debt service stays the same. So, we, basically, we're indicating the annual debt's still going to remain at 500, roughly 505 dollars a year, because the additional grant funding was obtained. One of the other changes we had to make to get the project in budget was to look at the materials that were used. So, the Monroe County Water Authority has standardized ductile iron water main. Price of ductile iron water main is extremely expensive right now. So, I don't know if I can figure out that, but the bid amount for ductile was, I believe, it was close to 6 million dollars. We also bid a PVC option. They will allow PVC, but their requirement then is if a repair is needed, the residents need to pay for that repair. If it was ductile, everything's all included, that would be part of your rate structure. But because it was really cost prohibitive to get the ductile to proceed, we looked at something very similar to what's happening in Byron and Bergen right now. So, if you've seen those products being installed, there's blue blood all over the ground, that's the PVC water main. So, that's the same route they went, because it just made the project more affordable for them in order for them to proceed. So, the other thing the Water Authority did, in addition to ductile iron water main, they've added another requirement to the pipe. They require a zinc coating, so it makes it even more expensive. So, again, what we've elected here to do was to kind of go back to the PVC option. So, really, the annual cost change to you from the original proposal, you'll see a capital reserve fund that's going to be assessed at 60 dollars per year. So, that would be per unit, so anybody in the district would be charged 60 dollars per year per unit. That amount would be put in a bank account, established by the town, for your behalf, only to be used on your behalf, so these are district funds. So, again, if a repair needs to be made 10 years from now, Monroe County Water Authority would send a bill to the town for the repairs, the town would pay it. So, that's what those funds will be used for. So, overall, the projected original annual costs were 885 dollars a year, now we're projecting 945 dollars a year. The reason we really have to come back to you is based on that number and based on the total anticipated capital cost. So, when you, when people voted on that petition, those were the two main numbers you voted on. You voted on total estimated capital cost, unit cost. If any of those numbers change or are higher, then essentially, the town board has to review the project and kind of have this process over again. So, that's it in a nutshell regarding kind of the changes related to the project. I don't know if anybody, we can go back, have technical questions if we want, I know we've had these meetings probably two, three times now over the past four years on this project, but if anybody has any technical questions and willing to answer them, or any questions on kind of what's being proposed for the changes.
Should there be a concern for the 190,000 dollar difference in the contingency between the 8-inch and 8 and 12-inch?
No. So, we have talked with the contractor, so we did not reject the bids. We have spoken with the contractor. Thankfully, between May and today, material prices have not changed. They're only projecting about a 50,000 dollar price increase from their bid, so we'd still have 300,000 dollars in contingency. Yes?
Yeah, so, if you decide not to hook up, right, you still pay the 504 dollars.
Yep.
Which is fine, but, so say later on down the road, you want to hook up, is that possible?
So, what I would encourage people to do, some Monroe County Water Authority, and they do a lot of, and I think sometimes it sounds like I'm bashing them, I try not to, but they have their ways, and I understand why they have some of their ways, because they, you know, they have to have standards, continuity between decisions. So, what they've decided is if the project moves forward, and someone doesn't elect to connect right now, what we would encourage you to do is pay the account setup fees with the Monroe County Water Authority. So, it's 200, so it's a 240 dollar one-time fee from the Monroe County Water Authority. So, if you pay that, you essentially, you're signing up for service to them. That essentially will allow the contractor for this project to install the service tap.
Okay.
So, that's the key, is get the service, pay the fee.
If the service tap is that, they'll be able to do it in the future.
Yeah, so, you could do it in the future or the other way, too, so if you don't pay the, if you don't pay the fee.
Well, our situation is we have, there's our property, and then we have two other properties that we give lifetime use to. But at one point or another, if they elect not to hook up now, those properties will be sold in the future. At that point, I'd like to put it in.
So, does a new owner have a different opportunity, or is it the same?
So, if the fee's not paid, therefore, we cannot, per Monroe County Water Authority, put the tap in. So, you still have the option later on. The downside is now you got to pay that fee, but now you also got to pay making connection to the meeting.
But that would be someone else.
That would be someone else, yeah, yeah.
That could be the new owner.
Yeah, yeah, so, so if you're in here, you own the property right now, and you say, hey, I don't want to connect right now, at least pay the fee, so we can install the tap to the main and eliminate that. I don't know where they are right now, but I wouldn't doubt they're probably putting at least 5,000 dollars for the tap, so.
Okay. Well, then it's worth putting the tap in.
Yeah.
Right, so, if we paid the 240 dollar set up your account, we don't have to pay the 5,000 dollars for that tap?
Correct, we would, the project would install that as we go by your house, regardless of the side of the road you're on, so.
Are there going to be vendors or people who then take that tap to the house?
Yeah, so, so you will, they come out of the, they come out of the works. As soon as they see somebody going on the road, you will have knocks on your door, there'll be signs on the road, but what I would encourage you to do, you know, at least get three quotes. They all have to install per Monroe County Water Authority requirements, so they know the requirements, but I always encourage everybody to get three quotes. Talk with your neighbors, go in with your neighbors, you know, economy of scale, if you get five people, five services with one guy, you know, your mom would get a better price, so.
Do you estimate what might be reasonable for somebody who's?
So, typically, we see 15 to 20 dollars a linear foot for the line from the property line to your house, and then it's just a question of what has to be done in your house itself. Some people don't have to do much, some people have to replump some items. The only other main component is related to your well. So, you have really two options for your well. Most people elect to abandon it and cap it. Majority people, some people say, I still want to use my well for watering my flowers or filling my pool, but I think a lot of people, when they do that, they really, you run the math, you know, for 3.73 cents per thousand gallons, you can fill your pool pretty cheap with their water. So, if you do choose to keep your well, you'd either have to pay some additional fees with the Water Authority for them to come inspect your property every three years. So, you have to ensure that the well piping is completely separate, I think it looks like it, the well piping is completely separate from the public piping, so there's no cross-contamination, or put a certified backflow device in. And in that case, you can intermingled the water all you want in your house, but it actually is a state public health law that if a well remains on a property, there can be no, and there'll be mingling of that water. Yes?
They do that inspection for free, they don't charge you for that.
There's a fee they're going to charge you.
They didn't charge me.
I'm just advising you, there's a fee.
They didn't charge me, they just came in and made sure I had a backflow preventer so my well could not.
If they didn't do it to you, that's fine, but I'm just advising you, per their guidelines, there is a fee, so they were more than likely to charge.
Okay, and what, so the 242 you're saying for the tap, that's above and beyond anything out here?
Yeah, that's a one-time, so you, you know, the costs on here are the public costs, so what the project's doing. You're also responsible for the one-time costs, so the one-time costs are running a little service line from your house to the property, to the property line, abandoning the well, or heaping the well, and the...
Is this the only district they're doing that on?
No, our district.
I didn't get that charged on whatever went through Elba, I don't know what district it was. That charge wasn't on...
For Elba?
Yeah.
Elba's not in Monroe County Water Authority.
It's not?
No, Elba's town in Tame.
Oh, okay.
Completely different.
They're not all that.
Yep.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Okay.
How much is that charge?
I don't, the inspection?
Yeah, the inspection and what it rounds you have to do with the same.
I don't remember, I don't have it on me, honestly. You can go on, Monroe County Water Authority website, you can go on there, you know, they have a master rate table and talk about all those fees and all, so I just don't have it. So, that's really only if you choose to keep your well. I will say with the, with the connection fee, I'm almost saying about probably the last five or six projects, we've been able to get those fees reimbursed through the project. So, what we typically do, at the end of these projects, any funds that aren't used are all grant funds. So, the town's required to spend all the loan money first and then grant. So, it's in our best interest to spend it all, and typically, what we have, we have funds left over, we can request, the Monroe County Water Authority sent us a list of who paid for those one-time fees, and then Rural Development will kind of check the town, the town will kind of check back to you. So, it's not a guarantee, but again, it's very likely that that will happen.
In the scope of this project, why isn't part of the contract, oh, you know, for, to lessen the cost, a contractor bid to run the services to every property?
It is to every property.
And, no, the line from the road to the house?
Yeah. Because, because the funding agencies, if they do that, that means the town accepts responsibility long-term for that piece of the pipe.
Okay.
So, you know, they're giving the town a loan, so they're going to want to see that they're operating, maintaining that forever, and Monroe County Water Authority wants no part of that as well, so.
Yeah.
There are, if there are low-income individuals, there is a program available on the private side through USDA Rural Development to help those individuals with the piece on the private side, so.
So, what was the name of that again?
USDA Rural Development. Yep. Yes?
You have a name of an engineer at the Monroe County Water Authority that we have some issues of, because it's a really long line and it's up a hill, I need to know what the specs are on that, so then when I get an estimate, I kind of know what I'm talking about.
Yeah. So, you just need, what, the type of material, Michael?
Well, yeah, so we're going to go, it's probably going to be about 900 feet.
Yep.
Got to go down a hill, under a creek, up a steep hill, and into the house.
Yep.
I was told I need 2-inch pipe, somebody said, no, you can have 1-inch pipe. So, as I get quotes, if I get two or three quotes, I want to make sure I don't...
Yeah, build it and dig it and do it.
Yeah, I don't underbuild it, right?
So, you want to get quotes now, though?
Respect now.
So, at some point, so, I can easily provide this information to you, so, as soon as the project moves forward, as the contractor starts putting in pipe, what will happen? The Monroe County Water Authority will have a sign-up session.
Oh, okay.
They'll typically reserve a day or days where they come here, where residents can come in, you know, pay the fee, fill out all the information, residents are then given information on your minimum requirements for the pipe, and at the same time, we've already provided Monroe County Water Authority recommendations for service sizes, so it's a pretty simple spreadsheet that we have that kind of outlines that.
Okay.
It'll give you options, it'll tell you, hey, if you put a 1-inch in, you know, here's the anticipated pressure compared to a 2-inch. For you, my recommendation, 900 feet for the additional cost, going from 1 to 2-inch, go the 2-inch.
Yeah, that's what my plan was.
It's like 2 dollars, and I looked it up the other day, it's like 2.70 cents for the 2-inch poly.
Okay.
So, if you're going to, if you're that distance, just, you'd be kicking yourself in.
Well, I was worried about the elevation, too.
Yeah.
If I waited all this time for water and I turn it on and it drips out, you're going to be in big trouble.
I don't know why.
Go the 2-inch.
Leave my bank.
It's like, it's so hassle.
And any idea when this project will move forward, like an estimated time of when they might start construction?
Oh, I hate giving these nowadays, because this is just, supply chain's still so screwed up.
Yeah.
Just, I want the whole deal, but I drive by some stuff, basic stuff for a roof of the house, and, you know, used to buy the last one on the shelf, there'd be 20 of them on the shelf, there's nothing behind there anymore, it's so bizarre. So, let's say the town board proceeds with modifying the district based on these expenses, still have to work the project, still have to be agreements in place. I would say best-case scenario is late summer.
Okay.
I would say that's best case. So, right now, I'm hearing PVC pipe is two, three months out, the problem actually is the, some of the fittings they have to get, those are the parts that are having a hard time in the beginning, so, it's just a...
And once it goes, an estimated time of completion, how long?
Oh, yeah, so this is 28,000 feet of pipe, so the contractor that's the low bidder is surgi construction, they can easily get 1,000 feet a day.
Oh.
The actual construction here, it's going to be two months.
Wow, okay.
Two to three months, yeah, that'll be the fastest, all this other stuff is what takes the time, actually, construction is the easy part.
Okay.
Do you know if they're doing any blasting?
No.
None?
Nope. Not that I'm aware of, so, we didn't have enough, we had rock, but not the amount that, you know, we've done other projects like Leroy where, you know, the bedrock, so, here we did soil moring, we didn't see anything that was, that would warrant.
I just want to know if I need a, you know, a bolt right there, something to get in my yard.
You may in your own yard, I'm not, there is rock, you may in your own yard, for sure. I don't know, probably, I don't know, people out here build their own homes, but there's spots, I'm sure, where it's bad now. Yes?
So, do we have to have this put to another vote? Can I understand that right, because of two?
Changes?
So, the town board essentially, they have to essentially vote on your behalf, based on feedback, so, kind of what I'm hearing tonight, there's nothing super negative about this, it already passed once, so really, the town board, at some point in the future, not tonight, they will have to pass a formal resolution to amend the district.
So, it'll be the board voting, not the residents?
Correct, correct, yeah. The first time was the residents, this will be the board actually.
How does this project compare financially to the other districts in the town?
So, from a unit cost standpoint, this is actually, obviously, it's higher than Water 1 and Water 2, which was, you know, early 2000, but we have some that are 1,200 dollars a year, I think on the high end in Stafford right now. So, it's received a nice grant, honestly, but we were pleasantly surprised when we got this grant.
I'm sorry, just because I was expecting my next door neighbor to be here, and I know that that family will qualify for any low income, if he decides, because, quite frankly, we don't have a problem, our neighbor, the lowest cost he's going to get hit with if this passes, is that 504, 97 tax bill?
Yep.
And if he wanted to safeguard potential in the path, that's the 440 dollars, put a tap in?
The 2, yeah, 240, yep, yep.
And then he doesn't get a usage fee, he doesn't use it anyway?
If he's not using it, he would not get a usage fee.
So, he could get by with just that a bit of money, and then he could look into this USDA?
Yep.
Okay.
But he could also, you know, as the project's awarded, you know, I would encourage yearly 100 or 100 percent.
Yeah.
Let's get the application now.
Getting from screaming me for hours.
Yep, yep.
You know, we have to go home and try and save.
Yeah, so it's USDA, so USDA Rural Development, they actually have an office in Tame.
Somebody who's expecting 20,000 dollars, I've just gotten down to 700, so. Say I worked hard, the rest is, you know.
In the future, there's some huge development in Stafford, and there's a high-density property put in, and so does the usage, or does the cost go down if all of a sudden?
Yep, so if there's 10 more units that get added, so now you have 101 units divided with that annual debt service, so the annual cost will go down to you, but don't, I don't know, I don't, we don't really see it.
Yeah.
I can just understand.
So, don't count on it.
Just a quick one, if it's ag property and you try to convert it and then hook up, there is another step you have to go through, if you're not a smart growth?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, there's provisions through Genesee County, also through New York State, that protect property, to preserve ag property. So, number one is New York State certified ag lands, so if a vacant property is in a New York State certified ag district, the town was required to pass a resolution that indicated they could not provide a lateral to that property. So, if someone wanted to build a house on that property when it's still in a certified ag district, they could likely build a house, but they cannot get public water. So, now, the property owner could take it out of the New York State certified ag district.
Take 10 years.
Or, I think there's ways to get it out ahead of time, but you got to pay, you know, the tax benefit you receive, I don't know the exact process, but there's, so, you can get it out, once you get it out, now the step would be reaching out to Genesee County, because if, so if the area's outside of, it doesn't need a smart growth area, you would need the permission from Genesee County for that service tap. Yes?
Is there any particular reason that we're around 12-inch line tapping into an 8-inch?
Yeah, so the 12-inch, so, so you see on here that county contribution, so the 416, 416,200 dollars. So, the county, part of their master planning for getting more water out to other areas of the county, Pearl Road was one of those areas that they looked at, and we could get away with an 8-inch, that's what we told them, if they wanted the 12-inch, we essentially said, you can pay for the upside. So, that's, so they're covering it, but that's what, that's why. So, it's really, it's really a future benefit for others in the county. Yes?
We have a possibility with Fudge Road, which side of the doors are high?
I don't remember, but regardless of the side of the road, service line will get run to your property line.
I think, but they drew the signs, it was on the opposite, that might be.
I just don't remember offhand, but I will.
It's just a fire, I don't know, it's on the road.
Yeah, odds are it's up the doors, it's a risk. Yeah, odds are it's up the doors, it's a risk stand. Yes?
So, the five hundred and five dollars is going to get added to our taxes?
Correct.
How do we pay this other amount?
So, Hunter County Water Authority, so, couple components. The county surcharge will also be put on tax bill. So, that'll be, so what they do typically, they get the usage from Hunter County Water Authority, then it gets put on the county tax bill. The water rate, so the three seventy-two and the twenty-three cents for the meter charges is a quarterly bill from the Hunter County Water Authority.
What about the capital reserve fund? How do we pay that?
That'll also be on the tax bill.
On the tax?
Yep.
What, what's the difference? So, we have this nine hundred and forty-four dollars and twelve cents. On the postcard I received, it said a thousand sixty-five. What's the difference there? Or are we talking nine forty-four, sixteen, twelve?
I don't know.
I think that had the grant money, it was a hundred and sixty-five.
If it was one million sixty-five thousand, that was the additional grant that they'll receive.
Oh, okay. If they have to come across the road, because I don't know what time, what side of the road they're coming down our road either. If they come across, do we tell them where we want the pipe, or?
So, regardless of what side of the road you're on, what happened is our inspector will knock on your door, say hi, discuss the project with you, and provide you with a wooden stake. And then you essentially go along your property line and say, "This is the most convenient for me," and you pound it in the ground.
Does it have to be so far away from an adjacent property?
No.
Doesn't, it wouldn't matter?
No.
Could be thirty feet from my neighbor.
Yep, really, just what makes the most sense for you. You don't want to cross your driveway, you don't want to avoid a tree you planted twenty years ago, you know?
Well, I have trees to avoid, but that's full forest. What happens if they dig across and there's damage done? Who's responsible for that? The contractor?
The restoration's all done by the contractor.
Okay.
Honestly, that's the hardest part of construction, just making sure everybody's happy with the final restoration. Yes?
With the meters, they're being provided by the rural counties? And are they, what's their plan on radio meters?
So, they have switched to radio reeds. It's all new meters or radio.
So, those after you know about the house?
Um...
Are they gonna be, and are they...
I don't think, no, I don't think they're out, I think they're...
Right on the meter itself? I think that's what they did as well. They switched over to the, they can pick up the...
Yeah, they can drive around it, it gets downloaded to a vehicle.
What's the, but the homeowner's responsible for the damage to that meter, correct?
Yes, yeah, you know, if something happens to it, you know?
freezes?
Yep.
Are we gonna get options for service lines coming in? We have that option if we want a two-inch main coming into our house?
As far as, so, so we'll provide, we'll provide, I indicated before, we'll provide kind of a table. You know, we'll provide recommendations for the piece in the public side. But that's not saying if we did a one-inch, we felt one-inch was adequate, and you wanted to put a two-inch in from there, go ahead. It's all, you can connect a one-inch to a two-inch, it's really about friction loss and, so, it still helps.
Is there a flow reducer-type valve that comes off of their line to reduce the water coming in?
Depends on the pressure at your house. You may wanna, you know, you may not want, it depends on the area of the project. I think we were... We're showing between, anywhere between fifty-five PSI and a hundred twenty-eight PSI in the public main. So, I would highly recommend, if it's a hundred twenty-eight, put a little pressure-reducing valve. So, your toilet doesn't blow on water.
So, how does that typically work? If you're like, say you're at the end of the line, the water stops right here, and you're the last house. Is that pressure higher or lower, or what's...
No, that really doesn't affect the pressure. So, where is the elevation that's affecting the pressure?
Okay.
So, all the pressure that you would have are from the two water storage tanks down the road. So, that's really what drives the pressure, based on the ground elevation. Yes?
Since you brought up the pressure, because it probably is gonna be some issues with some of these older homes with the older plumbing, that they're gonna have some leaks.
That's why I would recommend going with, going with a PRV. So, if you've got an older home, definitely consult the plumber you use, and PRVs, I think.
That's something the board should make sure that everybody knows that, because some of these older homes, you will, you're going to have some issues.
Yeah, Water Authority's pretty good at kind of talking through that stuff.
What's a PRV?
Pressure-reducing valve. So, essentially, you can take the pressure from a hundred twenty pounds down to sixty pounds.
Doesn't the inspector force you to do that?
At a certain level, yes. But, again, I don't have all the Water Authority, I didn't bring all the Water Authority guidelines with me, so I don't want to kind of talk on its ass. Yes?
Just want to verify, it seems like the capital reserve fund sixty-dollar fee is only if you have the water up at your house?
No.
Okay. So, it's not there?
No, yeah, sorry, no, that will be charged regardless.
Okay.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
And the five hundred four ninety-seven, that's not gonna change, like, even if your system goes up? It's not gonna change, right?
No, correct, correct. Yeah, that's all, that's strictly based on the loan, the annual loan payment, and the number of units we get divided into it every year.
He says about a hundred twenty-five is coming in?
Pressure.
The pressure?
That's the high, on the high.
On the high end?
Yep, fifty-five, based on our hydraulics. Questions? Yes?
So, what's the benefit of, so that was clear in the sound from the original vote?
Okay.
So, what's the actual benefit if you dump on your water? Just, you get a fire hazard, or?
Essentially, you get, so, so, yeah, so when you, it's a good question, so, a lot of people ask me, "If I'm not gonna hook up, why am I paying the five hundred five dollars?" So, essentially, New York State requires, so when you form a water district, every property in that water district, with the exception of the ag land, is required to pay something. And, really, the mindset of most communities is, sing a family house regardless if they connect or not, they get charged the one unit. And, yeah, you may ask, what's the benefit of not connecting? Really, there's two main components. Fire protection, one. The other is, the reality is, you have the ability to connect public water. And, so if something happens to your well supply, five years down the road, it's available. It also really does make your house more valuable. You look at people that are buying a property, that's a lot of times, they'll ask that question, you know, what's public utility available here? So, it does make properties more valuable. So, the properties are benefiting by not, by drawing the water. So, that's really the, how it's calculated. Yes?
I have another question on this unit. So, we get one unit, then I have vacant land, and I was told I wouldn't have a half unit. But now you're saying I may have a tenth of a unit?
Yeah, so the formula is, um... Actually, I take that back, there were none.
Yeah, on the list that I was given...
Yeah, sorry, I take that back, there were none.
Okay.
None of the ten.
So, these are their half units, one unit?
Yep.
One and a half, or two, or however many?
Yep.
So, can I add something to that?
Sure.
If you go to your town's assessor and have that unit added to your house, and pay the two hundred and seventy-dollar fee, you only get one unit. You don't have to pay that extra half unit. But that's when that eight-year, that you can't build on that property for eight years.
Yeah, we, we, we looked at that rule, I'm not merging my land.
Yes? Tom?
Any more questions? I will say, for you, when they, if they come into your house to inspect your hookup, to have kept your well, they'll amortize that charge, and they'll put it on your water bill maybe two or three months. You don't have to come up with the large amount all at once.
Oh, for running the line?
For inspecting the hookup.
Two troops suffer from...
If you keep your well, they have an easement, and they're right to come in every once in a while and inspect it, and make sure there's no cross-connection, there's a charge for that. And that, that, they will put it on your water bill over a period of four months.
It's a recurring fee, isn't it?
Yep, I think it's every three years.
So, you don't lock in, so you're charged?
No, no.
For some inspection?
Nope, nope, nope. If you don't connect, then there's...
I thought you said it was inspection.
If you connect and you choose to keep your well, then there's, then there's that fee Bob was just talking about.
Yeah, so there's a fee if I don't connect? No, you do connect and keep your well. Because they don't want, they want to make sure that your well doesn't mix with the public water.
Yep.
And that comes in with your water, apparently, it's a period of, to make sure you haven't, to be ready to ditch it.
You got it. Smart on. Yes?
So, we have this land on Fatch Road, probably gonna sell it in the next year or so. What's like our best, maybe you don't just pay that two forty, you have a tap?
And I'm not using, because you know, how is that?
Well, is it an ag land?
Um... I'm not, no, it's just a...
So, so if it's not an ag land, the other question you'd have to have, now you gotta deal with that smart growth. So, odds are Fatch is probably not in the smart growth area. So, you would have to approach the county regarding getting permission for a connection there. So, vacant, vacant's a little more difficult to make it happen, you just gotta...
But we should pay that two forty, or a hundred dollar?
We'd make sure you're allowed to per the county first, before we can even... Yeah, so, if it's a vacant property, and it's an ag land, then we can't do it regardless. If it's not in an ag land, then you'd have to approach county planning, indicating that, you know, you want, desire to put a connection here for future use, and you're really gonna get their permission for that.
I don't know if it was considered agricultural for land?
So, if you go on, I mean, if you're not sure, Genesee County's got a pretty nice GIS website. So, if you go on the Genesee County website, there's a GIS mapping page. You can look up any property in the county, and there's a layer on there for ag districts. It'll shade the properties that are in New York State certified ag districts. So, that'll give you an indication of, does that property hit or not? That's one question you gotta answer. If it's out, like I said, then I would recommend you reach out to the county planning department.
Actually, very quickly, do you send in, in March, an exemption form to the assessor every year?
No.
It's not a, it's not, it's rule vacant.
I would reach out to county planning department, just to make sure.
You better reach out to the county commander, see if you can put the tap in, so if you sell it in the future, somebody could add water.
Right.
Now, keep in mind, keep in mind, the other, the other thing with that, if we put a tap in, it's gonna bump you up from the half unit to one unit. But now we, now the project's essentially paid some additional money to get that tap in that service. So, it would change that unit category for you, too. You'd have to outweigh that.
Aren't you expecting pressure?
I call the town complaining board.
Yes?
What would be the timeline for the board vote, so that we all know when we should get feedback to you?
So...
An hour and a half?
No. Nothing's never that easy, there's so many legal requirements.
Probably next board meeting, about?
Yeah.
I think the next board meeting, which would be the first, second one, we'll vote there.
The official public hearing for this is next. It got messed up, the paper didn't advertise it properly, so we can't call this a public hearing, so it's a public information.
A lot of laws we gotta follow, unfortunately.
Some of them are not official public hearings.
The next town meeting.
At the next town meeting.
The thirteenth, February thirteen hundred.
If I'm honest, Tom, I can't make it. I respectfully ask that you guys pass it, if it would help you out immensely. I need water so bad, it's so terrible.
We all agree, totally.
Yeah, it's our, it's our intent to...
I sincerely appreciate that.
We're not gonna stand in the way of that, we've got too much money invested in it, I tell you.
Yeah.
Yes?
What about wells that are not, not running the house?
You still have to show that, you either have to put a backflow in, or at least have to pay that, pay that fee. So, you, they, you have to prove that it's disconnected. And you gotta, you gotta ensure that proof long-term.
So, those wells aren't even being used before, if it's not running the house?
Yep.
Yeah, we have the process of that.
You have more than one. So, we have one of us in the house, and we have another one there.
They have bushes on the...
I said some fence.
They're gonna know, right?
Well, I don't think anybody's familiar with County Water Authority's here.
Did you say you didn't know what it would cost if you don't have a tap in three years down the road?
I don't know the fee, man, but I wouldn't doubt it, it's probably five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty costly.
And that's probably for insurance, I'm trying to watch. I'm good, you're good?
Any questions?
Hold on.
See out. It's cold, it's a lot of trees. Yeah. So I've got, I've got the big ones of those rubber tractors. Especially the Douglas fern, they all, they all look great. They just, that, needle can, they call. Yeah, of course, they have, they have, they have to tend them. This one, you can't see it, but the tree is your needles. They infect them with the new and then the tree is your needles. So then you got a tree that's got, doesn't want to fall in. Is there a trunk? Uh, some of them are, where you got a good old breeze work that is bad. But the ones right behind, now the house and friends looking at it. I mean, they choose their stain. They need your, they're, they're.
So you know, you're, you're convinced of your wood, right? I understand. I mean, it's, 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 it's. I know what, that's my point, because I bought their roofs and steams. So I wanted to make it so that all of them, because I know this is like three inch of fire.
You know, we, we, we have the same problems. We got the farm and they're always doing something to go to their needles.
Parties were being.
If it wasn't for the grants.
They just, they just, they just, they just, they just.
We were all in trouble.
Okay, we're both, we're first one.
We could very well afford the engine.
Right.
Being, being in the mild for that, they fall as.
No, if it was running red, doesn't, it's just, it's not successful.
All she does again is.
Well, yeah, that's the funny, the funny thing is, is to get the grant. It's like they have a. It's like how long.
But then she doesn't, I know, because it's a couple. There's nothing to take this off her tax. And I was a second round. But I didn't. What are we, we're on.
I tell you what, I didn't know that either. I said that.
She, yes. Yeah. I was saying the same thing. Say you get their, they buy it all. Yeah, the side is the same line.
Library.
That was a, that's. I saw, I saw. Right? Both, there it is. Well, I, I watched so much calcium, decent, just change, well, I would eat it off and break it off, push it inside, it'll spring, calcium, get a little bit in there. We've got good water.
Kathy and Harold.
Problem is trying to convince.
Two things after.
They want a water bill. So that whole northeast part of town, there's no water.
No, no, it's within a thousand feet. It's up on the road. It's like Gethseps up there. The one, two, three thousand, they run us out.
Oh, you're very good.
Yeah, that is.
And you can't have a player that's like your back lawn.
Tell us about, about good things.
You got it.
You too.
All right, man, good job, Jim.
Thanks.
Move along here. Just start to move on.
No, that's all. Keep going.
Thank you very much, James.
Yes.
Bye.
First item on the agenda here that isn't on the agenda is Resolution 11. At a regular meeting of the Town Board of the Town of Stafford, Genesee County, New York, held at the Town Hall room 237 in Stafford, New York, in January, well, this is not January, I gotta change. Change the date to 2023 at 7:30 o'clock, the young preparing. In the matter of the increase and improvement of the facilities of Water District Number 12 in the Town of Stafford, Genesee County, New York, the board are calling a public hearing. Whereas the Town Board of the Town of Stafford, Genesee County, New York, has cause to be prepared a Matt Blenin report including an estimate of cost pursuant to Section 202B of the Town Law relating to the increase and improvement of the facilities of Water District Number 12 in the Town of Stafford, Genesee County, New York. The Water District Number 1, consisting of the installation of a. That's not for. Consisting of the installation of approximately 28,450 linear feet of eight and 12-inch water main in the Town of Stafford, Water District Number 12 service area to provide audible water and fire service. Genesee County will pay the difference to upsize from eight-inch water main to 12-inch water main as part of Phase 3 water supply project and original furnishings, equipment, machinery, apparatus, appurtenances, and incidental improvements and expenses in connection there with a, at a maximum, maximum estimated cost of $1,650,000. And whereas said project has been determined to be a type 1 action pursuant to the regulations of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation promulgated pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the implementation which has proposed and has been determined will not result in any significant adverse environmental effects. And whereas it is now desired to call a public hearing on the question of increase and improvements of the facilities of said Water District 12 in the matter described above and to hear all persons interested in the subject thereof concerning the same in accordance with the permissions of Section 202B of the Town Law. Now therefore be, it is hereby ordered by the Town Board of the Town of Stafford, Genesee County, New York, as follows. Section 1, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall in Stafford, New York, in said town on, it would be February.
13.
On February 13th, 2023, at 7 o'clock PM prevailing time on the question of the increase and improvement of the facilities of Water District Number 12 in the Town of Stafford, Genesee County, New York, in the manner described in the preamble hereof and to hear all persons interested in the subject thereof concerning the same and to take such action thereon as is required or authorized by law. Section 2, the Town Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause a copy of the notice of public hearing hereafter provided to be published once in the official newspaper and also to cause a copy thereof to be posted on the signed board of the Town, such publication, and posted to be made not less than 10, nor more than 20 days before the date designated for the hearing. Section 3, the notice of public hearing shall be substantively the form attached heretofore as Exhibit A and hereby made part thereof. Section 4, this order shall take effect immediately. The question of the adoption of a forebroad order was duly put to a vote on vote called, which was as follows. Uh, someone make the motion to do this. Uh, go. About. Second? Now, this is all triggered by Daily News not publishing our notice, right?
Pretty much.
All right. Yep.
Councilman Panik?
Yes.
Councilman Schramm?
Yes.
Councilman Deason?
Yes.
Councilman Pacer?
Yes.
So you guys are clear?
Yes. Okay. We have some other business. Designation of official depository, that's. Outside of number 3. Resolve that the Town, that the Stafford Town Board hereby designates the following as official depository of the Town of Stafford for all operational accounts. Five Star Bank, Payroll, resolve that the Stafford Town Board hereby designates the following as official depository of the Town of Stafford for investment purposes. No. That's not. Okay.
And this is like, like most teams.
17 Bank, Oakfield, New York, Five Star Bank, Leroy, Key Bank, Batavia, Bank of Castile, Batavia, First Niagara Bank, Batavia, JP Morgan, Chase Bank, North America, and New York Labs. Motion, Samuel. Jimmy. Who knows? Maybe we can go back to certificates of deposit if interest rates go high enough.
Yeah.
There's a little limit to that, too.
Okay, let's, also by Councilman Deason, second by Councilman Panik, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution, is this?
This is 2.
Okay, all right, all right. We're starting over on the numbers, I think, that's why.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Authorization for the supervisor to pay certain claims prior to audit. Resolve pursuant to Section 118 of the Town Law, the Stafford Town Board hereby authorizes a supervisor to pay claims for public utilities, postage, freight, and express charges before they are audited. And being further resolved, the Batavia Town Board authorizes. Ticket Heidi sent this to you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, the Stafford Town Board authorizes. Let's see, AC.
ACH payments, oh, yeah, check on. Sure, they're just doing the living now.
Okay, ACH payments to the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development before they are audited for the following. What are these, 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, and 13? Motion to do this. Is there anything for 12?
Yep.
Yeah, it's probably the, is it 12? 12 is out there?
Motion, Samuel.
Can I question on this? Do we have an auditor?
Yeah, I don't know who.
Longson and.
Longson and Comerick, yeah.
Yeah. Because on the organizational meeting, it said to be determined, but last year, I thought at one of the meetings, it said we did have one.
Probably the same firm that does it on the table.
Probably? Do you know? Who was it? What was it?
I can't tell you the name of it.
Longson and Comerick. Thank you.
Motion by Councilman Panik, second by Councilman Schramm, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 3, Resolution 3, payroll scheduled for 2023. Resolve the Stafford Town Board hereby adopts a payroll schedule for 2023 to be biweekly for all employees. Motion to do this. Somebody did that.
Would he have to do Resolution 4?
Oh, all right. Motion by Councilman Pacer, second by Councilman Panik, to approve the payroll schedule, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adoption of salaries for 2023. Supervisor, $14,560. Councilman Ford, $5,616. Town Clerk, Dax Collector, $41,250. Highway Superintendent, $67,500. Town Justice at 2, at $25,740. Assessor, $22,500. Assessment Clerk, $5,000. Budget Officer, $637. Cleaner, $4,000. Clerk type is $16.50 per hour. Code Enforcement Officer, 1, $8,750. Code Enforcement Officer 2, $8,750.
That's $17.5 apiece. It's also down below. You also get it twice. Okay.
It's repeated.
Oh, direction. Yep.
All right, okay.
Court Justice Clerk, $21.68 per hour.
Court Justice Clerk 2, $19,000, $19.70 per hour. Court Attendant, $25 per hour. Deputy Clerk, $16.50 per hour. Deputy Highway Superintendent, $26.75 per hour. Laborer, $20 to $25.75 per hour. Motor Equipment Operator, $25.75 per hour. Planning Board Chairman, $75 per meeting. Planning Board Secretary, $75 per meeting. Planning Board Members, 7, $55 per meeting. Planning Board Alternate Member, $25 per meeting. Recreation Director, $4,000. Recreation Aid, $14.20 to $15 per hour. Recreation Assistant Director, $15 to $17 per hour. Recreation Leader, $14.20 to $15 per hour. Registrar of Vital Statistics, $610. Town Historian, $1,400. Town Enforce, zoning enforcement officer, 1, $8,750. Zoning Enforcement Officer 2, $8,750. Zoning Board of Appeals Member, 5, $55 per meeting. Zoning Board of Appeals Alternate Member, $25 per meeting. Zoning Board Chairman, $75 per meeting. Uh, question on this. Are these rates at the result, are they at the budgeted amount for the Justice Court Clerk? Because if you recall, at the budget meeting, there was two different hours amounts that Bob was working with.
Yes.
And he gave us the higher amount.
Yes.
And then at the last meeting, clerks were saying, no, it should be the lower amount of the hours.
The original budget. This is for sixteen hundred and eighty hours. That was originally.
So this, this is the budget would be consistent?
That's the budget.
All right.
It's covered by the budget for sixteen hundred and eighty hours.
Thirty one hours a week.
Yeah, thirty one hours per week.
Yep.
That's the numbers they originally gave, so they have the budgeted money.
For thirty one hours a week.
Right, sixteen, it comes up to sixteen eighty.
How does this compare to last year?
Oh, it's a three percent increase.
Two percent?
Three.
Three percent. Okay, this is resolution four, motion to adopt this. Someone?
I have a, I have one quick question on the budgets. Do the towning, do the planning board members and the zoning board members, do they get paid if they don't come to a meeting?
I'm not sure how that, how that works. Because they, they submit, the chairman submits.
They submit it per meeting.
Per meeting.
Get paid per meeting.
Yes.
They get paid per meeting?
Yes, per meeting, yeah.
And you guys get paid per meeting or you get paid monthly? How is that paid?
Or salary.
Your salary.
Plus per meeting, right?
No.
No? I thought I saw, I heard something about councilman fifty five bucks per meeting, but no, that's for, uh, for of appeals. I have a motion by Councilman Panic, is your second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Panic, second by Councilman Decent, to approve resolution number four, adoption of salaries for 2023, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Resolution five, establishing workday for elected and appointed officials. Resolve the Stafford Town Board hereby establishes the following as a standard workday for elected and appointed officials for the purpose of determining day's work reportable to New York state and local employees retirement system. Elected officials, supervisor, deputy supervisor, councilperson, town justice, five day work week, six hour day, town clerk, tax collector, highway superintendent. Five day work week, eight hour day, appointed officials, court attendant, assessment clerk, members of board of zoning appeals, members of planning board and town historian. Five day work week, six hour day, assessor, assessment board of review, cleaner, clerk typist, code enforcement officer, court, justice clerk, deputy town clerk, deputy tax collector, laborer, motor equipment operator, recreation director, recreation aide, recreation assistant director, recreation leader, registrar of vital statistics, zoning enforcement officer. Five day work week, eight hour day. Motion to accept this. You know, we pass this every year and the postings on the pension site are substantially smaller, but this is the state recommended. We run into this quandary because, is anybody take, who signed up for it? If you are, have you taken a look at your statement? Because it's, it's a tiny percentage of this that they're giving you credit for. Yeah, I don't know, these, these, this, it's always been a question. Well, it certainly isn't coming through his money.
No.
No, but not, but not, no, what's coming through the pension system is correct.
Yeah.
All right, did it last year, someone?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Panic, second by Councilman Decent, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Steve Hope for Jersey Park. Sure. Resolution ten, purchase a used tractor with mower and broom for highway department, whereas the highway department has the need to have a tractor with a mower and broom, whereas highway superintendent would like to purchase a used tractor. To 2011 and 2012, okay, one hundred horsepower, twenty six hundred to twenty eight hundred hours, seventy two inch mower and eight foot broom. Resolve the Stafford Town Board hereby authorizes the bidding and purchase of unit. Bids to be received no later than February thirteenth, twenty twenty three at three PM at the Stafford Town Hall. Further resolve, money will be appropriated from DA five one three oh point four. You take a look at the market?
Yeah.
And there's some good ones out there for ballpark, what will save?
Yeah, it's good. Should be in good shape for that. New ones are like a year and a half out and prices are godly and.
That, that's kind of what I'm looking for. What does a new one go for?
About a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy.
All right, and that's, that's a year and a half out if we get it. And what will a used one go for?
This is somewhere between forty to fifty, somewhere around.
I think it's worth the risk.
Yeah, and we're, you know, tight on revenue right now, so.
No.
We should ease the burden on the first one, you know, prolong that, give me a few more years.
No, I think it's a sharp move. Someone?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Panic, second by Councilman Pacer, to approve resolution number ten, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. CEO, CEO hours. I seem to be a question. We all over here. I thought we were pretty clear in our resolution what they were, you know?
I have a question on that. Are they going to have evening hours or weekend hours like Barb and the assessor does? Are they strictly going to be, you know, because people work and they need to get things done.
Have you contacted the, the office directly to ask about that?
No, I just saw it when I was reading this.
They'll modify it if they need, if they need to. They'll do afternoons and weekends if they have.
Oh, okay. So we did get another one? Who is that?
Uh, Gene Sinclair.
Oh, okay.
He's, he was previous.
Yeah. Gene Sinclair, he's the one that they let go during the pandemic.
Very, very Monday, Wednesday and Friday, and Gene works Tuesday, Wednesday.
He was Thursday.
Gene Sinclair was our other zone. We had two during the pandemic, they let Gene go.
Oh, okay.
Had Gene, doubled his salary, give him less hours. Now they're splitting the money and they're splitting, so he's going to work twelve hours a week.
God, thank you. It's five days, one hours a week, eight hours a day.
Well, that's the guide.
Is it part of our original resolution?
But they're only going to work twelve hours.
We did the.
We did the.
It's actually about three months in a year, so they used to work.
So you want to do that for this meeting or put it in the February meeting? I'll put it in the February meeting.
Okay, and then we can come up with a timesheet for it.
I was thinking just yours, but it needs to have room so they can designate if they aren't in the office where they are.
Plus notations on it to above times that they spend.
Yeah, a bit more detail.
Right.
It's one hours a week. So do, do, do you have an electronic copy of yours? That's part of the problem we run into is we got these darn paper copies.
I can look.
That was done like two thousand six.
Heidi, Heidi might have something.
When did I start? About two thousand six.
I kind of, I kind of want to keep the, as one of our own. Could you scan that and send it to me?
Yeah.
And then I'll just.
You can modify it.
I'll build it, no, because I've modified it a couple times.
Yeah.
Well, if you modify it, that means you have an electronic copy.
About three computers ago.
See what you got. And if you have an electronic copy.
Okay, I'll take it.
We'll move item nine ahead to the February meeting.
Yep.
And then we have grant writing information from the county. I have a copy of that here. You want me to read it all?
What's it do?
It's pretty concise. It's the county's grant has got five grand a year for municipality.
Right, so if this fellow to question, I can pull the.
Any, any further comment about this? Well, part, part of the, part of grant writing is find out who's got the grants. Now municipal solutions knows that, but we've got to pay for their now.
Right.
So we need to look at how, how can we monitor, I don't want to call it the market, the availability of grants. It depends on what we have, if there's any grants going out there for it, you know, and the amount of project we have, maybe there are grants for it and maybe not.
We just got the wea grant through them. I wonder if this is can be something we utilize towards that when we had to pay the wea grants.
Well, normally the judges monitor the one from their organization and they, they normally turn, they usually turn those in out a year. And monitored from her group. Are there, are there any from your group or are they a little too small for?
Yep.
That's, so it's kind of what I figured. Then it was just those, those general grants.
I could sound for recreation and parks.
You thought they got the word for recreation, but then it's not going to the county, wasn't it?
Okay, I think that comes here. Okay, now we have item number eleven, Leith and barn issues. Your red bills. I'm going to read it. Are the Leithens here?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Yeah, I'll read Jeffrey and Gina Leith and event venue barn permitting, seventy seven ninety root two thirty seven. Dear supervisor, comment and town council members. Back in March of this year, the planning board received an application for a special use permit from Jeffrey and Gina Leith and for approval of a special event venue using their existing farm barn located on property at seventy seven ninety root two thirty seven. It might be the Byron Holly Road in another town, but it's not here. The application was incomplete and lacked many of the required attachments. After discussions with the county planner, it was determined that this type of action could only be granted as a special use permit under section one eighty two dash twenty one B parenthesis three D, commercial recreation, indoor or outdoor, which is reserved for the town board. The applicant was provided with that information and a list of additional items needed to make their application complete. It is our understanding that all of this was provided to the applicant on the request to submit the company an application and related materials to the zoning enforcement officer so he could check everything over and submit it to the town board for consideration. It is now December, well, it's now January, and from what the planning board has been told, the application has not moved forward with the effort to obtain the necessary permit. They have, however, continued with their activities of holding parties, wedding receptions and other special events at the site with no permit from the town. It is a recommendation of the planning board that the town board follow up with a letter to the applicant's requesting that they immediately comply with the request of the zoning enforcement officer and submit a completed special use permit application to the town for consideration and that they halt any further activities at the site until a determine is made by the town board when the requested permission is granted. This is very truly yours, William R. Van Alst, chairman of the Stafford Planning Board. Captain, planning board members, Stafford's CEO, and Stafford Town Attorney.
Well, good evening, I'm Jeff Leith and my wife Gina Leith. We just came from the planning board meeting where we cleared the air with them in regard to the situation that has kind of spiraled out of control. So we're here to kind of set the record straight and to let everyone here at the town kind of know where things are at at this point. So I'd like to start by kind of addressing some of the points in the letter to help clarify from that point. We did submit an application for a special use permit. That application was submitted incomplete, but it was, the zoning code enforcement officer was notified that we required some assistance from him to be able to complete that application. Unfortunately, we kind of kept missing each other, couldn't get a date together. So we kind of tabled it until our schedules freed up, so I was under the understanding that it was still kind of sitting on his desk. I did not and was not aware that the application had been forwarded to the planning board for any type of review, because of course we knew it was incomplete. We, we then reached out to Bob Bennett on the Genesee County Planning Board, who assisted me in trying to resolve some of the issues because we received a letter from the town code enforcement dated January nineteenth, twenty twenty two, stating that they had come to his attention that we were running a wedding party venue at our home. He indicated to us in the letter that we would in fact have to get a special use permit or have our property rezoned. Unfortunately, due to the language that he noted in the letter, he basically forbade us from holding any type of that, which according to both our personal attorney and attorney specializing in code and zoning enforcement, we couldn't even have Easter dinner that because of the way he wrote this letter. So the attorney that we sought out advised us and told us, quote, that you were misinformed, misled into getting, trying, being told to apply for something that you would never get, because after review, reviewing the code and the special use permit list, the town of Stafford does not have barn, wedding, venue, party house as an option. Paragraph two, which indicates the special use permit under the commercial recreation indoor or outdoor, which according to the letter is reserved under the town board's discretion, that was never shared with us. There was no information given to us that there was even an opportunity under the current special use that we might be able to qualify. That information was not shared by your code enforcement. The next paragraph is probably the more important one, is letting you, the town. The next paragraph is probably the more important one is letting you, the town board, know that in no point in time did we, and we are not, running a business. And to clarify that, I wanted to go over some things that occurred on our property. And this dates back starting basically in June of twenty twenty one. As you all know, COVID caused a lot of heartache for people. People lost deposits for weddings. Some people had to cancel events with no hope of rescheduling. We had two family members reach out to us to ask us if we in fact could allow them to get married on our property. Now Gina and I have lived on our property for about twenty seven years. And our property has been kind of the place for family and friends to hang out, have a good time. We've hosted our own private parties, whether it be a graduation party, whether it been a retirement party, surprise birthday party.
Weddings.
And we have had weddings for family and friends. At no point in time did we receive any proceeds from anyone for any of these weddings or any other event. We also allow charitable organizations such as the Gillum Grant Organization, the Alzheimer's Association, and our own church to hold fundraising and get together events at our barn at no charge. We received this letter based on rumors and chatter, one dated January nineteenth, with the assumption we were running a business. We were kind of forced into making a decision, thinking that we were trying to protect ourselves to apply for the special use permit. Again, realizing after the fact that we were going down a road with no success. Jerry then provided us with a list of nineteen things required for our special use permit. Those things.
And again, that special use permit was not the one indoor or outdoor. This was just.
A general special use permit.
You need to apply to this.
There were no specifics given of what category we'd fall into. The list was quite lengthy. I reached out to various organizations such as the New York, the Genesee County Health Department, as well as the New York State Liquor Board, who I was advised to. The Genesee County Health Department, after describing what we were looking to do, we're not looking to prepare food, we were not, had no running water, we weren't going to be providing any bathrooms in our facility. It was either going to be porta johns and or bathroom trailers. The Genesee County Health Department was more concerned about how they were going to wash hands. They said our, we didn't fall under any category, nor did we need that. Caterers, vendors, of those such would be required to have their appropriate health equipment. Same thing with the liquor board. They said, no, you're not serving any, you're not selling any, the vendors. And the reason I share this, this was an example, I went to Jerry and said, Jerry, I don't need these things. And he continued to tell me I did. So after that frustration, that's when I reached out to Bob Bennett at the Genesee County Planning Board with some assistance.
I think Felipe, we talked to.
We talked to Felipe as well, and he advised us on how to proceed. Unfortunately, some things happened internally here in the offices as well as out on the street. There was a lot of talk about the Lathens. We received a phone call from a family friend whose daughter was inquiring to get married in our property. An employee of the town hall, who is no longer with you, decided that it was her business to pick up the phone and call this friend and indicate to them that we were running an illegal business and that if they held this wedding, that the police would be called. Regardless of that, we decided to move forward. And on March sixteenth, we did drop off that special use permit with the hope that we were going to receive some help. However, the talk did not stop. Jerry Wood himself made a phone call to that same family friend and stated that the Lathens are not allowed to host weddings, parties on the property. And the Lathens would not be getting a special use permit and they would not be getting rezoned for venue. And Mark, or excuse me, Jerry went on to indicate to this friend that they had better decide on where to hold their wedding, weddings someplace else. After we received that phone call from our friend, we did receive a message from Jerry. But we were unable to take that call because we were on vacation. He indicated to us that the paperwork had several pages that were incomplete, which he was aware of because I had asked for his assistance. There was also a check written for the incorrect amount. We had given a check for three hundred and twenty five dollars. Apparently now the information was that we only need to pay seventy five dollars for the application. Jerry never indicated to us the breakdown of, he did indicate the breakdown of all the payment, all the fees involved, but he led me to believe that I had to pay the whole amount upfront. He then further indicated on that message that we were not allowed to have any gatherings at this proposed venue until we are approved for a special use permit. On Friday, March twenty fifth, we received information that was very concerning to us and kind of, kind of left a bad taste in our mouth. It was shared with us that Jerry Wood's sister had just recently opened a wedding barn fourteen miles from her house. We questioned Jerry's lack of assistance to us. At that time, we sought out the advice of Mr. David Roach, an attorney specializing in code and zoning in Warsaw, New York. We need to get clarification of our rights as a homeowner, not a business. And what that special use process should look like, should we continue to pursue the special use for venue? Again, at this point in time, we did not realize that we were going down a road that was going to be unsuccessful. We were mostly concerned because Jerry's statement, it was that we were not allowed to have any gatherings.
Capital emboldened in the letter he sent us.
Our family attorney, as well as Mr. Roach, advised us that if pushed, they could prevent us from having such Easter dinner, which was around the corner, as well as our son and daughter-in-law's baby shower. Basically telling us we could not have family over our house. Mr. Roach indicated at that time that we in fact did not qualify under the current list of special uses stated by the town of Stafford and that we would be required to petition the town to either add us or, based on this letter here, find a way to assist us in the current list. He did indicate, however, that Jerry's letter was a very overreach and a very broad generalization, to use the word, any gatherings. After this, we decided that we were not going to pursue any business. We rescinded our special use application and asked that any monies be returned to us. We did, on Saturday, April twenty third, we did have our daughter, our daughter-in-law and son's gender reveal party. However, we had not only our attorney on call, but some family friends that are both Genesee County sheriff, we had notified them as well because we were afraid that in fact, someone was going to show up and try to stop us. On Saturday, April thirtieth, at another location, my wife Gina hosted a special event for ladies of special needs children. This was a day pampering for moms with children with special needs. Again, an employee of the town of Stafford took it upon themselves to collect up our special use permit and our check and tried to convince us that we should pursue this permit. At that time, it was also shared with us that there was talk about our party house in the Adirondacks. Words like investigation, research were used when describing the efforts being made against us. Our party house in the Adirondacks is our vacation home, which my wife also uses as a retreat, respite for, again, mothers, daughters, and children with disabilities. In mid to late April, Jerry called the Genesee County Chamber of Commerce and tells them that the Lathens are not allowed to host events on the property. The Genesee, the Genesee County Chamber of Commerce had reached out to us and they were looking for a venue to hold their, was it fifty?
Fiftieth.
Fiftieth anniversary celebration. They had heard that we had provided at different times, at no charge, our property for charitable fundraising. He indicated to the chair, Eric, what was his name?
Eric Fix.
Eric Fix at the time, that we were not allowed to host these events and the police would be called for any gatherings we hosted. He suggested, and this came right from another employee of the Genesee County, Genesee County Chamber of Commerce, who was participating in this meeting, suggested, Jerry suggested that they call Woodsmith Estates for their fiftieth anniversary celebration.
And again, we were, the only thing they were paying for were the bathrooms. We were not making any money on letting them hold it there. It was us sharing our property for our community chamber of commerce that is supposed to help bring business to our community. Shut down.
The chamber regretfully, based on this pressure, rescinded their request to have their event. And again, we were not going to charge the chamber. We then learned after the fact that the chamber did have another location and unfortunately was not free of charge. On Wednesday, May fourth, my wife Gina came down to the town hall to collect up our paperwork and also to try to settle things with Jerry. We do have a tape recording of this conversation, if you're ever interested in listening to it. We told Jerry at that time that we would not be pursuing the special use permit and we would not be pursuing a venue of business. They just, they both discussed various, of various gatherings that had occurred on our property. Examples again were the Gillum Grant Gala, family fundraiser, family weddings, et cetera. Jerry indicated at that time, as long as money was not exchanged for the use of the property, the town cannot tell someone what they can and can't do on their property, nor how often they can entertain. Gina also, or Jerry also complimented Gina on the exceptional condition of our property, how much work we had put into it and how strong barns like ours are, based on his experience. On Saturday, May seventh, we hosted our church ladies for a tea and luncheon. We also then, on June nineteenth, had a private bridal shower for one of our family members. On Saturday, June twenty fifth, as my wife does, reaching out to ladies, women, moms, children in need of care and respite. In this particular day, it was a day of wellness for ladies facing challenges. Women that had just recovered from cancer, had lost a child, had lost a parent. Jerry Wood had arrived on our property unannounced. He caused a tremendous scene. He not only threatened myself, he was trespassing. He had no paperwork, no citations, no documentation. He tried to enter the barn and was trying to and attempted to make, take pictures. He continued to escalate the situation after repeated times of being asked to leave. He indicated the sheriff was on its way to break up this illegal party. He used many phrases in his effort begging the Genesee County Sheriff to show up, that it was unsafe, it was unsanitary. Told the Genesee County Sheriff that they, we were not allowed to have any event at our place. This was also graduation weekend. I asked Jerry, are you going to go around to every graduation party and break up their parties? Jerry, being as confident as he thinks he is, was escorted off our property by the Genesee County Sheriff and was told not to come back. I have a police report clearly outlining what Jerry's conduct was at that time, including, quote, I wanted to punch Mr. Lathan. He definitely violated New York State Penal Code, section one ninety five of the official misconduct, official misconduct by a public official. This situation went all the way up to the undersheriff. The captain sergeant on duty ran it up the chain to find out what, if anything, the Genesee County Sheriff could do. The Genesee County undersheriff indicated to them that there was no juris, no criminal activity, no legal event, and by no means were they going to remove anyone from the Lathens' property. But that wasn't good enough for Mr. Wood. On Wednesday, June twenty ninth, I received a call from the same deputy that had come to our place of residence. He indicated that Jerry now had in his hand a placard wanting to post on our barn, deeming our barn unsafe. Fortunately for us, unfortunately for someone else, and I think coincidentally, there was a big ruckus down here at the town hall. The sheriff department was quite busy that day and were unable to assist Jerry. They further told Jerry that they, it was low on their list of priorities. I received a courtesy call that same day from the town attorney. Mr. Boylan wanted to hear our side of the story and help rectify the situation. We informed him that Jerry was acting irrationally and had no probable cause to condemn our property, as he had been, been the one to recently issue building permits for the renovations to our barn. Mr. Boylan seemed sincere that he had wanted to help and that he would inform Jerry that no business was being operated on our property and that we had no reason to, and the town had no reason to continue down this path.
I just need to interject one thing. The ladies' day, I'm sure if Jerry was in here, he would say, well, I know that you charged for it because he called people.
I'm going to get to that right.
Oh, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, honey.
After the meeting with Mr. Boylan on the same day, we received a phone call from a friend whose wife had attended the event. He very sheepishly, or very cleverly, or very, however word you wanted to use, asked that friend, hey, what did you pay for your wife to go to that event? The friend told him it was none of your business. And that friend quickly picked up the phone and called us and letting us know what was going on. I immediately called Mr. Boylan back and explained the situation, told him that evidently Jerry was not taking his advice. Again, not good enough for Mr. Wood. He then made accusations that we were running another illegal business out of our residence, a business called Extreme Clean. For twelve years, I operated a carpet cleaning tile business that conducted services outside of our home at other people's house. Our home address was the address of the business. We did not conduct business, we did not sell goods and services at our house. All the business was conducted off site. Again, that wasn't good enough for Jerry. The following day, he attended the town of Virgin Planning Board meeting. He indicated to the planning board that our son Josh was running and operating an illegal business because Josh had purchased and had taken over Extreme Clean. Numerous board members know our son Josh, and they knew that Extreme Clean was a service oriented business. They indicated to Jerry they would not pursue any complaint. On Friday, July eighth, I received a text message from the town attorney indicating that the deck that we had received the permit for now required engineer stamped drawings and that it was built in compliance and the words ASAP, blah, 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 were used. We noted on the permit application under engineer architect that it was not applicable. Jerry Wood signed off on the permit. And I want to kind of elaborate on this because, and if you're aware of this, but Mr. Wood falsified documents.
Was anyone here aware of this?
What document?
He altered the building permit that he had issued to us, and we have copies of it. He had issued us a building permit for our barn and our roof. The only inspection required on our deck was file inspection, that was checked on the back of the form. Since Jerry did not get his way, he decided that he was going to alter that building permit and he checked all the boxes on the copy that he received in the mail. Gina has samples of those that she can show you.
So these are receipts, because we had, we had, Jeff came down here to get our building permit. He had come down twice because he was told to pay the wrong amount the first time. So we did one check for twenty five, one check for thirty five. This is the original, that was on November tenth. Right here, do you need a architect or engineer, not applicable, which we have, it's really not applicable, that's, that's true. You could see here, the first check was written. And then when we came back, the second check was written on here, just on the actual permit. Nothing here was signed. Now this is the original one that was given to us that we had in our file at our house. Nothing there was signed. Over here, just final completion.
Jerry did ask for a sketch, which I provided, and he asked that once the deck was completed, provide pictures, which I also did.
So this was the sketch and then to send pictures once it was done. So we sent the pictures once it was done. So we sent the pictures once it was done. Then this is the letter that sparked the phone call that we had to provide an engineered stamp drawing for, like Jerry told us to, which he didn't.
Who sent you that?
Pardon?
Who sent you that?
Jerry.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if I want to read it or not. He sent, he sent with that letter that he wouldn't sign off on the deck until we got the engineered stamp drawings done, like he told us to. But he did sign off on our roof, that was part of the same building permit. However, this copy that he provided with his packet to us said that it was waived because of COVID-19 and he backdated it to November 10th, like we didn't come in. Like Jeff, I assume that's what that means, that Jeff didn't sign it because it was waived because of COVID, but we were here twice that day. And then he checked off a bunch of other boxes on there, which would make it seem like we didn't call to have the proper inspections done. So I believe that that's not really something you're supposed to do. I think that also falls under the penal code 195 official misconduct.
Did the scope change between the...
No.
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 So what you initially told him for dimensions?
It was done exactly to the dimensions I provided. And also, we did seek out some attorney advice and they advised us that under, this, unfortunately, doesn't make sense, but under the education law, do you have right there?
Yeah, it's, uh, New York State Education Law 7307, 7209, requires, and this is from, for, yeah, for residential building, requires seal and signature, seal and signature of a licensed architect or engineer to be affixed to all plans submitted except for farm buildings or residential buildings under 1,500 gross square feet or do altering, alteration costs under $10,000.
So the total cost of our deck was under $5,000?
Actually, $20,000. It's $10,000 for New York State.
And it, and it fell below the square footage too. So that's a huge area of concern for us.
You take it upon yourself to...
Wow.
Oh, oh, write that down what that was? Oh.
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry, I didn't catch all of this.
Well, we can get it to...
Oh, yeah, we'll gladly provide copies of this.
Um, we did attempt on July 11th to come to the town board meeting, but at that time we had retained counsel and the counsel advised us not to come to the meeting. I believe if you, back in July, our attorney, Mark, Mark Young at the time, sent a letter to the town indicating that we were asking for this harassment to end, indicated in that letter too, that we were not seeking the permit and also indicated that we would not be and are not running a business. Also, two other incidents happened at two different times. We believe Jerry Wood reported us to the New York State Liquor Board. The first time, we received a letter dated July 15th, it's called a letter of advice. It was based on a complaint from the ladies' wellness retreat that we were selling alcohol. Unbeknownst to Jerry or whoever turned us in, the police report indicated that there was no sale of alcohol being conducted. That was the second, actually. The first time, we received a phone call from the New York State Liquor Board.
On Easter.
On, on Easter, referencing, um...
A party we had posted on Facebook.
Party we had posted on Facebook to family and friends. And you know how Facebook works, people share it. And it said, "To our family and friends, stop down, see the flag, come look at our barn and enjoy a cocktail." And someone turned us in for that. Both times, the liquor board reassured us that we had done nothing wrong and actually they had no jurisdiction because we in fact did not have a liquor license, that all those complaints would have to be forwarded to Genesee County Sheriff's Department.
But ironically, they already had a file on us because we have hosted events for fundraisers for nonprofits where usually the caterers come in, the bartending service comes in with their liquor license, they have to apply for that, we have to provide like a map of our property to make sure there's proper exits and things like that. So they looked through our whole file and the investigator's exact words were that 90% of the calls they get are just like this and it's probably just someone trying to make trouble for you.
But he said our paperwork was all in order for all those other events. On Saturday, August 14th, we hosted a ladies' tea for the Alzheimer's Association, which raised a tremendous amount of money, also very important to us because we recently had a friend that died of Alzheimer's, whose son we provided our barn to he and his fiance to get married at no charge. On August 20th, we hosted the Gillum Grant Gala. This is a huge fundraising for the Gillum Grant Community Center. It raised over $140,000. We ourselves donated over $5,000 in cash as well as services and also the use of our vacation home as a raffle item. On that day, coincidentally, as being told countless times that we are not allowed to have parties, we are not allowed to advertise to the public, we are not allowed to have food, we are not allowed to have liquor, on and on and on and on.
Parking.
Parking. We don't have to require parking. But lo and behold, on August 19th and 20th, Jerry and Susan hosted a come camping weekend. Party started on the 20th, bring your camper. Garbage plates would be served. It was evidently a surprise party for Susan. There were going to be games, fun, fire, pond, pool, creek, band and music, Seventh Heaven is playing, 50/50 raffle with no indication of where the money is going. Again, we were told we could not have any monetary gain, someone was gaining monetarily from this event. Dirty bingo, cornhole, games. Campers and tents were welcome, bring a dish to pass, garbage plates provided, BYOB, friends, invite others, all are welcome.
On Facebook.
I'm sure that was bring your own Bible. I'm sure that was bring your own Bible.
Yeah. So Gina can show you that. So all the things that Jerry indicated, starting almost two years prior, told that we could not do, weren't allowed to do, when I pressed him, so you mean to tell me someone can't have a graduation party? He told us we couldn't have a car cruise for friends. You're not allowed to do that. Well, why Jerry? You're not allowed. Well, Jerry, how come? You're just not allowed to do it. But Jerry, but Jerry's allowed to have a campground, serving food?
And this isn't about, we honestly believe every one of you, every one of you, it's your own property, as long as you are not conducting illegal business, selling drugs, serving alcohol to minors, hurting people, causing a ruckus, like it's your own property. So it's, we're not here to say he shouldn't have a party. If he wants to have a party and he's not doing any of those bad things, so be it. If a hoarder lives next door to him and that's how they live, Jerry doesn't want to do it, do anything about it, then so be it, because that's that guy's property. Like everybody has their own property, as long as you're not hurting. So we're not here to say Jerry shouldn't have the party. We're upset that, like Jeff said, for two years, he's told us, we can't do any of those things. He's sending us letters, he's getting all of you involved, wasting all of your time, wasting the planning board's time, wasting our money because we pay to live in the town. It's ridiculous and it needs to end. So we're almost done.
And he repeated that event on New Year's Eve. So if you're, if you want to look, look at his Facebook page, which I advise you all to look at.
Because...
They should be more than glad to share what I have taken off his Facebook page.
But you might as well cover that right now if just it goes...
So in your town handbook, employee handbook, you have a section, social media. You indicate that social media includes all means of communicating or posting information or contact of any sort on the internet, including to your own or someone else's web, blog, blog, journal or diary, personal website, social networking, any affinity of a website, web building, boards, chat rooms, whether or not associate or affiliate with the town, as well as any form of electronic communication. Ultimately, you are solely responsible for what you post online. Before creating online content, consider some of the risks and rewards that are involved. Keep in mind that any of the conduct affects citizens, vendors, suppliers, people who work on the behalf of the town or its legitimate business interests may result in disciplinary action up to including immediate discharge. Have you ever, you take a look at Jerry Wood's Facebook page? No, you should. It is, I'll show you, I'm going to use terms like racist, homophobic and transphobic comments in posts.
And this would have never had to come out if there wasn't some other...
All right. Now, do any of these cover local citizens, anything in the conduct of duty that he posted?
Well, I don't know. Do we have any transgender people living in Stafford perhaps? Or do we have any...
No, but if it directly is...
Our policy...
Say someone specifically.
Does it say specifically that if it affects a citizen of Stafford?
No, it doesn't say specifically.
Well, if you're, yeah, okay. If you're gonna, go ahead. I mean, you...
No.
Sounds like you're...
It's a question that...
In my experience professionally, in my experience in consulting other people in your same position in other towns, when you, and other people who work for, I'm friends with the director of the ARC of Genesee Livingston and he has let people go for this very reason because it represents not only, he's an employee of the organization, his comments and his posts, whether they be shared or created by them, is a reflection on the entity that which they work for.
And a reflection of our town that we live in.
Do what you want with that, but I wanted to bring it to your attention because it goes to the character of the visitor.
So I don't have to research all through it? Any place did he specifically expose his employment as the town of Stafford?
Oh, yes.
He listed his employment on his Facebook page as code zoning force officer in town of Stafford. It's right on his Facebook page. He represents the town, that's what he, in my line of work, if I post that, I would be terminated immediately or lose my contracts.
I wouldn't even need to have my, my employees listen in my company. If I posted something like that, they'd fire me on the spot.
Yeah. I have a friend who worked for, who worked for Howard Hanna, he was just let go because he shares conservative Christian posts and they said, "We don't like that." So he was let go. So it's happening all over, so. But I'm not going to split hairs on it, it's just for your knowledge and you do what you like with it.
Yeah. Our point again is not that Jerry loses job, our point is he's not doing his job, so he needs help to do his job. And that, and all of this that has to do with us needs to end.
But it also goes to the character of this individual that he's...
Maybe some of the things you've heard or...
So following the Gillum Grant Gala, ladies' Alzheimer's team, the president of the Gillum Grant Board reached out to us and shared a conversation that he had had with your town attorney, Mark Boylan. Mark Boylan was inquiring and had several questions for John, indicating, how much do the Lathens' get for renting their property? Very disheartening because the Gillum Grant Organization has been something close to our hearts since our children were young, provided soccer, T-ball, as well as other things they provide to the community. The president of that board quickly denounced all the accusations that were being made and said that in fact he believes that the Lathens' actually spent money out of their pocket to make sure the event was able to happen. Back in mid-November, Mr. Clement, I reached out to you via phone to kind of give you an idea of what was going on. Based on the fact that our name is on the agenda again, we were respectfully asking the town to cease putting us on the agenda and discussing this because we're not seeking a permit. We're not seeking to have a business. But we will continue to host family and friends as we have for 27 years on our property at no cost to them. Whether we have an event of 10 people, we have an event of 50 people. They're private, family events. We receive no proceeds, we receive no monies. And according to Jerry's own words, as long, and your town attorney, as long as we do not collect or profit from this, then we're not running a business and we're not. Any monies that are collected are by all the vendors. The caterer, they charge a fee, the bartending service charges a fee, the DJ charges a fee, the, um, just the list is endless. Those vendors are all allowed to make money on our property, which is fine because the family, the friend who's using our property, they're getting the benefit of a nice day. It's gotten so bad that anyone that comes, if a family friend wants to use our property, we have them sign an affidavit that we're not charging them. And we have copies of those as well. But we want this to end. We have no hard feelings against anyone sitting in front of us. We understand that you're doing your job. But we really wish that someone had reached out to us and really asked us to come in and speak to them and clear the air on this. This got way out of hand, it did need to be. The talk in the community has been relentless. I cannot tell you how many times our phone has rang. We thought this had subsided with winter and the barn storing our boat and our cars back in the burn and just kind of taking a breath of air, getting through a very stressful summer, which it shouldn't have been. We had a lot of great things happen, our birth of our first granddaughter, a lot of nice things were happening, but it was this heavy cloud over us the entire year, thinking like, when are the police going to show up? When is someone going to come on our property and create a scene? It did happen, but we were afraid it was going to happen again. And again, we had the Genesee County Sheriff's Department on call each time we notified them that we were having an event at our house and they reassured us that if there was any problems, just please call us, we'll have an officer there immediately. So we're just respectfully asking that this be put to an end. What you do with the information we provide is your business, it's your job to oversee the employees that work for the town. So we're not asking for anything to be done hatefully or harshly, but...
And the only open business we really do have is closing out that deck permit.
Yes.
But Jerry is not allowed on our property. So, you know, Mr. Sinclair can perhaps come and do it or, you know, a quota enforcement for another town if you have that arrangement, but, um, and we would kind of rather get that done sooner than later.
Yeah, because there's liability out there.
Well, it's our liability.
Well, if you have a question related to that, I can, in general, what is the purpose of a building permit? What is the true definition of a building permit? Why do towns require someone to get a building permit?
To make sure you're compliant with the New York State Code.
So...
And also, if you're, if you're changing the value of your property, the assessor wants to know.
Correct. Well, this kind of all got started because, I mean, I was not aware, been at our house 27 years, we'd just put a second roof on our house, we did the roof on the barn, we were notified by Jerry that we needed a permit for our roofs. I apologized, I came right down, got the $25 permit, which started this conversation because that's when he indicated to me that I couldn't have our car cruise. But what's the procedure after that permit is issued and we call the code zoning, that, okay, the job is done? What happens next?
Well, they'll, they'll inspect the job and they have files and they're on all of the, you know, whatever you've done to your property, changing it, it's all in a filing.
Okay. So a building permit is basically not only to let the town know, but I would also gather that it's also to assist the homeowner in making sure that the work that they hired someone to do is safe.
Not necessarily, possibly. To code.
Okay, to code. So code though means it's safe. You've done, you do the right structure, you use the right lumber, you use the right tie-ins, you've done all those things correctly.
To meet the code.
To meet code.
Meet code.
And the reason for code is to make sure that safe work is being done, so no one gets hurt after the fact because of someone's work.
Correct.
Okay. So how is... So how's a, what's, so, explain to me how a roof is inspected?
I don't know how it's inspected, but a lot of it's a state requirement from the roof. That's the reason we do it.
Okay.
So that you don't overburden your choice with too many layers of roof.
So is that drive-by inspection?
I don't know.
Okay. Just another example, several of our friends in Stafford have had barn roofs done recently, or roofs, and we reached out to them and say, they were very questioning, like, "No one stopped to inspect my roof, but I got this in the mail that it was closed out. No one asked to get up on my roof to make sure that I just didn't throw another layer on, or, did I do a complete tear-off? Did I change the structure? Did I add dormers? Did I have to change a valley?" Whatever the situation was.
If you put a metal roof on a barn, that does not add to the layers of material that's already there.
But my assumption as a homeowner, if I'm being asked to get a permit, then I'm also expecting that to be inspected, and I am to be notified that, oh, we got a problem here, this wasn't done right. Doesn't meet code. This has to be done for it to meet code. But how do you do that when you drive by? Just saying.
I don't wanna take away from what they said.
Can you introduce yourself, sir?
I think everybody knows who I am, but I'm James Pontello.
Are we gonna get into a different subject?
No, it says direct, I just wanna make you aware of something. I was here for the water district, but some of the comments that they made here, I was on a job site a few months ago, their names came up, I'd never met this couple, their names came up about our town, and about all this that's going on, and I just kinda listened, you know, I'm there to do a job, and I was surprised that, and now here I am today and hearing this side of the story, that's concerning. Okay? I'm just letting you know, that's not why I was here, I was here for something else, I just decided to stay. I'm not gonna get into all the similarities with their case and what, everybody knows my history here. I am gonna make the recommendation, and you can take, you can quote me, that's fine, but I would make a recommendation to the board that Mr. Wood be suspended until further investigation as to some of these allegations. These are serious. I mean, and if he's done something wrong, it shouldn't reflect on this board, it shouldn't reflect on the town, it should be addressed. So I would make that recommendation for you all to consider, that maybe he should, and you know what, you have Mr. Sinclair now, so it's not like you're gonna lose too much, but maybe at least do a proper investigation, because this sounds pretty serious, hence, I don't wanna see it brushed off. So, as a citizen of Stafford, that would be my recommendation to you all to strongly consider that.
Thank you.
I'm checking that. Just curious, have you, you said you filled out a special use permit, so then you were underway to going to a commercial business and you decided not to?
Based on the negativity that we were getting, and the lack of cooperation, the talk of employees here getting out in the community, as well as Mr. Wood's behavior, we decided that we were not going to expose ourselves to any more of this, and we rescinded and got back, we actually have it right in our folder here, got back our application and our check, and notified Mr. Wood at that time that we were not going to pursue this. He indicated, and we have him recorded, that as long as we were not collecting money or profiting or...
Running a business.
Running a business, there's nothing the town could do, as long as, of course, we're not doing something illegal like selling or making drugs and district, whatever, that kinda, we all know what that means. But, and we have followed that. And I, just recently, this week, and two weeks ago, your, the town attorney, we no longer have counsel, so he, I indicated to him that we no longer had counsel, would he be willing to talk to me? He said yes, had a great conversation. He indicated to me that he had advised the board to kinda leave it alone, there was nothing to pursue, nothing there, the Lathens weren't pursuing this. But again, our name is on the agenda again, we just don't understand why.
Part of it is because the planning board knew nothing about this.
Yeah, the planning board knew nothing about this.
They knew nothing, so they thought it was just this open thing, and then with all of the other talk, and, you know, if, again, the thing, and I told the planning board this too, the thing that was very, very disheartening, and was kind of like the final straw that said, "We're not gonna pursue this," is when we found out that Jerry's sister has a wedding venue. Now, again, we were not looking to do it, when we were considering doing it, to see what the process looked like, what, we both, we have our own business, we work like 60 hours a week each already, it was more like, okay, if we're gonna do it, you know, go through this process and whatnot, and when we found out his sister had the venue in Batavia, Genesee County, similar situation, she was residential, agricultural, residential, they didn't have it as a, so he knew the process, because I, she had just gotten it a few months before. So he knew the process it would take to do it, and did not offer up right from the get-go when we called. He, I can't, you know, and again, respectfully, but you all work for the citizens of Stafford, and that's us, and to be helpful. So, you know, whether he said, "Oh my gosh, this is a, gonna be a long process, and this is what you're gonna have to do, my sister just went through it," okay, but that was like nothing, here's, here's your packet, and knowing, I think knowing that it wasn't on as a special use off the bat. So when all that came to light, we just, and you know what, we had got, we've lived here, Jeff has lived in the Flori his entire, his whole life until we moved to Stafford. And we are very, very involved in our community, very supportive, and we know a lot of people. And so a lot of people have, have come to us, and somebody came to us and they were at a wedding at Jared's sister's, and at that wedding, she was bad-mouthing us to the guests of the people at the wedding. So it's just all kinda, you know, that's all like personal stuff, but it all started here, and it needs to end here.
We did present this all just a little while ago to the planning board. They advised us that, they were not aware of any of this. And, Mr. Ben...
Benalls.
Benalls did apologize to us for the process in which it did not get done correctly. And we advised them as well that we are not pursuing this, and thanked us for, you know, stop coming in, and that's when we came over here. So I apologize for taking up a lot of time, but I just think it was very important to share with the board collectively what had been going on.
So, there is no commercial enterprise going on whatsoever?
No.
You aren't advertising?
No. We have no web site, we have no Facebook page. If a family member approaches us, we're not charging them, but, you know, there are a few fundraisers planned for the summer, the Alzheimer's Association, our church, there will be some activity on at our place, but we don't charge for it.
And again, like, the ladies thing.
Yeah.
Because there was a charge, not for all the ladies, it's a shared charge. So everything gets worked out, how much it costs that day, for the bathrooms, for the caterer, for the speakers, we had speakers come in, come out of town, that we had to put up at Airbnbs, and then that's all split between X number of ladies, and then we have X number of ladies that we gift the day to. And that's how that is set up. So money's collected, it's not any different than if friends get together and, you know, or family reunion, everybody's gotta pay, you know, $10 toward...
I mean, just imagine 65 ladies, all with the hope that the day is going to bring some, something to them. These are women who recovered from cancer, we had moms who had lost children, we had ladies who had just lost a mom, or a dad, or a husband. And to have this individual there, just behaving irrationally, threatening, and then to have the sheriff come there, you know, it just, it went so against what we were trying to do for these people, and it, it just, it, it should have never happened, it was, it was uncalled for. And fortunately, the sheriff liked the moment, made all the ladies laugh and have a great time, and it ended, in the end, the Genesee County Sheriff, sergeant that was there, helped the situation, but it should have never come to that. I mean, Jerry's fountain of rules and regulations and psych, he was parked so far in his driveway that he took up one of the parking spots that the kids park in. He wouldn't leave, he wouldn't move his truck. The Genesee County Sheriff told him, "Now back your vehicle to the road," on the phone. He was so adamant that he had the right to be...
Do you all have the police report?
No.
What's the last contact you had with anybody who's zoning? Whether it's correspondence?
It's all been through...
Well, the letter that we just got is...
Well, the town attorney reached out to me via text that needed to get the...
When is that? When's the last time you've had any contact with Jerry at all?
Oh, we haven't, because we told the town attorney that he wasn't to contact us.
So you haven't heard from him at all?
Other than, yeah, I don't know where they...
Other than, any, anything dated after that police report?
That's in July, then you said?
Yeah, no, June, June 25th.
So you had no contact at all with that person?
I'd have to look at letter, the letters, to see if we got letters.
No, but Jerry has contacted other people.
Right, but not you directly?
No.
No correspondence, anything like that?
No.
You seem pretty calm to me, Mr. Latham, because I'd be furious right now.
Well, I'm very mad inside, but I keep my composure professional, I just wanna get it all out there, I don't wanna be, yeah, I could come in here yelling and screaming and shaking my finger, I'm very good at that, but that's not how I wanted to approach this. Because that's how we were treated, and I would never treat people like that, you know.
When did you get the revised zoning permit? The building permit?
Yeah.
Well, I've talked to yous in the past, we, I had issues getting a building permit, and he didn't come and inspect anything at ours either. I mean, we had to call him to come and inspect the holes.
Oh, right, oh, right, yeah. So the original was issued on November 12th, and then we received the letter on July 13th, that was after the ladies retreat, that had the altered building.
Yeah, that was the only, to answer your question, that was the last contact he had mailed.
Right.
But again, he indicated things that were not true on the original permit.
That needed to stand.
I mean, I imagine you have all these in the files, anyway, you can pull these through yourselves.
What you really think, at this point, phone zoning is a CLO to inspect the deck?
Correct. And Mr. Sinclair is more than welcome on our property, I know Mr. Sinclair, I've had some great conversations with him over the years, and he's more than welcome to come down. And I know whether permitting, it is accessible, so, nothing to hide, it was vetted, checked, and tested, and everything else, and it is built where it's supposed to be, it was built according to the information we shared in our drawing, and then followed suit with the pictures as asked of the structure. Quite proud of it, it's very impressive depth, so. Any other questions? I wanna make sure we leave here that we've put this to rest. What you do with this is your business, we're not seeking anything outside of just making you knowledgeable. I would hope that it will no longer be on the agenda unless we request it through whatever happens in the future. I don't think this needs any further discussion.
You were on the agenda because we thought that you requested it.
No.
So, and the reason why I asked if you were, you got the special use permit...
We requested a special use permit, we never got it.
We requested, and that'll be hard to do, because that would be spot zoning.
Right. We didn't, originally found that out. We didn't know that, to be honest.
But the planning board, I guess, indicated, which we did not know at the time, and I did not know until we got, we foiled this letter, that there is a possible provision that the town would consider based on the commer, based on outdoor recreation, such and such. Well, of course, we did not know that. The, Mr. Roach that we consulted with, he did not know that, because that's under the consideration of towns to stretch where they feel fits, they want to, I guess, or whatever, or there's latitude within categories. But reading it as it was posted, we were advised that we were given misinformation, that there was no way you'd ever get a special use permit. Yes, he also said that you can't spot zone, so we don't...
This is the attorney telling us this.
Yeah, we're not adjacent, or we don't share a property line with any other zoning, it's agriculture, residential, all around us. He then advised us that there is a process, which you petition the town to consider your venue business, whatever, as an additional listed item. And he says he's helped many, he just helped a venue, I think, on pavilion in that area to do that, they petitioned the town to change the zoning, not change the zoning, but to change the list of special uses allowed.
It goes a little deeper than that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, so does his fee.
Yeah, so does his fee.
His fee to do all that, represent us, and do all the legwork for us was considerable.
And that's when we were, that we were like...
You did catch that you also have to look at our comprehensive plan. Because there's areas where we tried in the comprehensive plan to target where development is, and areas that aren't targeted for development are left off.
And we understand that.
That's what I'm saying.
That would be an additional hurdle.
But, no matter who is in that position, is zone, zoning code, I would hope that they would be extremely knowledgeable, or be upfront and say, "You know what, I'm not really familiar on how this is gonna work. Why don't we sit down, and let's get some people involved that know how this works, and let's help you." It was nothing but a brick wall the whole entire time. And, you know, this is up for debate, maybe he had an agenda, maybe he didn't want his sister to have competition 14 miles away. I don't know, maybe. We share that with people, and they go, "Oh, now this makes sense." But that may be a stretch, we can't, you know, we can assume or say that all we want. But the impression and the feeling was there because we've got no help whatsoever.
And the comprehensive plan, I would hope that, you know, all the people associated with the town, like the code enforcement, the plan, would be really aware of what that is, so when someone does come to apply for something, or say, "Hey, I'm thinking about..." That they could be told right then and there, "Oh, this fits in with that, or it doesn't, and this is why." And we get that because our place in the Adirondacks, I mean, it's beautiful up there, we wouldn't want Dollar General going up next door to our house, right? So we get it.
The problem with somebody doing that is that would be, we are already predisposed to not granting something. And we always have to be open to at least consider...
Yeah, that's fair.
On, on a lot of zoning issues.
Yeah.
Big ones and little ones.
Yeah.
It's too bad it's so complicated for... That we're opposed to it can kinda muddy the water. So you have to listen to what comes in, and then your vote, the vote is the actual endorsement or not.
It's too bad it's become so complicated and so, it should be that way. You know, people need to earn a living, people need to find ways to, we've heard so many horror stories here in Stafford, what's happened to some people, we're just trying to make a living.
My only question is, is there a period in the January of last year timeframe, a lot of work being done to actually go into having a venue?
No, we just made renovations to a barn that needed to be done, new siding, new windows, new, new roof. We've always, believe it or not, the very first day we walked on our property after we owned it, we walked out the back of the barn, said, "Boy, this'd be a great place for a back."
You know, just because the...
Things that we wanted to do.
Thing is, on the internet, it leaves a trail. If you look up your address, it brings you to a cancel website, I think, called Our Barn.
And we did, because we were considering doing that.
That's what I was asking, were you considering?
Correct.
It were, yes.
We wouldn't have submitted the special use permit, but, being a business and owning our own business, to be proactive, okay, is there something here? What's the first thing people do? They put it on Facebook, is there any interest? Second thing they usually do, let's create a website, see if there's any interest. Because if there's no interest in a business idea, why would you pursue it? But immediately, we found out that the process was going to take longer, or that we found out the process wasn't going to happen, we pulled all that stuff down. We weren't soliciting, and we don't solicit, there's no advertising, nothing, if you go to Our Barn, whatever, now, it just has, it's a blank page, "Coming soon," or whatever. Fortunately, there's certain limitations that you can actually take down on the internet these days. There is no Facebook page.
You also mentioned the Chamber of Commerce, and the same thing took me to their Facebook page.
Correct. Because they...
They approached, because we, well, because we were... They approached us, because we... well, because we were gonna host their event.
What they were saying is that your venue is open for business.
Right, but they did... I actually asked them, "It shouldn't be on there." It did get taken off, because when all of this really happened, um...
But there's a history on the internet you can't get rid of.
Right, because I believe it... well, it was down... it was off, because it wasn't. And I called and said, "We are not a business. You need to take it off." And the only reason why we got put on there, we didn't join. They did it because we were gonna host for free for them, and so it's all we'll put you on there.
They did as a complimentary thank you to us, that they gave us a one-year membership, thanking us for offering our place for no charge.
The question that has to be asked is, was Mr. Wood's conduct acceptable behavior by this board? And that should be addressed, because if it's not, who's to say it doesn't happen again? And maybe it's... could be worse, so again, I know what you're saying. It's great that you all wanna move forward, but we can't let officials that are not elected, you know, that they need to be addressed.
And I agree totally with it, but I did not want to visit... I didn't wanna be... Like, we have some...
No, I got that.
It's just, you know, the only review process an official has that works for a town or municipality is directly related to the services they provide. And you guys aren't going out visiting him when he does a inspection. You're not following up with a customer survey, "How was your experience?" It takes times like this... You know, Jerry got a nice compliment in there from someone else he's worked with. Great, you know, that's part of everything. Our experience wasn't very good. But the only customer review you have is when people have the courage to come forward and say, "We were treated wrongly. This is what happened." What you decide to do with it then becomes a reflection on the board. Maybe no one decides, Jean and I will ever know what the circumstances pan out to be. Maybe others will, I don't know, but that's kind of on you now to rectify. And that's up to you to decide. I'm not gonna come in here stomping my feet and demanding that he be fired. It's not my position. He doesn't work for me. If he did work for me, he'd have been gone a long time ago. Because our story is one of many.
Makes me nervous, though, because there are... our property, there are things I'd like to do with it. I don't wanna have to hit a brick wall and not get the resources that I need to be able to start a business in this town or to make some money off of my property. That makes me really nervous when I hear this. You do realize that compliance to the law is the responsibility of the homeowner? I don't think that's being argued, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we did... we did exactly what we were asked to do.
Because if we weren't, we would have gotten, over the last two years, or 27 years, we would have, I would think by now, if we were doing something we weren't supposed to, we would have gotten a code violation or a ticket or arrested or... And the only time the police have ever been at our property, when I had the Ladies' Mommas Day.
I mean, you've lived here for 27 years.
I know.
They wanted to start a business. They came to the town. I heard what you said. I mean, I think you've done everything you possibly could. And I'm looking to see what the town's gonna do at this point, because you're right. It's up to the homeowner to make sure they're compliant. These people came in, they tried to find the right person to get the permits and the necessary help. And it sounds like it didn't work out that way.
I mean, it's cost us thousands and thousands of dollars in attorney fees to get correct representation, to get correct advice. We had a lawyer in our retainer all summer for our protection. They didn't know when he was gonna pull in the driveway.
I know. We had a baby shower. We had to have our sunset at the end of the driveway to make sure that he didn't show up.
Frankly, I mean, the way that, you know, everything they're describing, it sounds like the way that they've been spoken about has been extremely malicious and unnecessary. I don't understand how that could be okay.
What we said was okay. Some of that became...
But we are required, because whether it's your cousin or a customer, if we don't execute our requirements to the building code, we can be joined in a suit on that, so...
But if it was just about closing out a building permit?
Right. But he didn't have to do things like alter the permit to garner his position to... I mean, the language that was used to us was disgusting, what he told us, what he wanted to do to us.
I commend you guys for someone threatening you when you did.
Well, we just kinda... we mind our own business. We do our thing. We... like Jeanne told the planning board, and she mentioned it here, or she did. I don't really give a rat's rear of how anybody else lives. I don't.
I would be... so what you're basically saying is that probably the Chamber of Commerce advertising was an error, because you never went into a commercial business.
Correct.
Yeah, that's... yeah.
We were offering as a gift to them to use our property, because it was also a fundraising event for them.
I would be careful in that I think fire codes still have maximums. You still have to have exits, whether you're charging or not, so...
And just to put your mind at ease, all our exits are labeled. We have smoke detectors.
Fire extinguishers.
Fire extinguishers. We're not idiots. We're conscientious homeowners. Whether my son and his daughter and his wife has a baby shower, I'm not putting anyone in danger. I mean, we have proper lighting. We have steps marked. We... and that's just for our owner.
Bob, just a question. We... there are safety inspections that have to be done, and we delegated that to our code enforcement officer, right? And it really doesn't matter if you're profit-making business or not. Those still have to be done.
You're incorrect on that. It's a private residence. We're not using our barn as a business. There is no law.
No, I'm saying that...
You have no... no one has a right to come onto your property and request any type of inspection of a personal property. Now, if we were a business with a sign out front, and we're selling X, Y, and Z, yes. We are subject to fire extinguisher inspection. We are subject to capacity, if that's part of our business. But we are a private residence.
Or if it's in shambles and going to cause damage to a neighboring property.
Or injury, imminent danger to someone literally standing next to the building. And there's a whole nother section on what you can and can't do when it comes to outbuildings or agricultural buildings, so we spend a lot of...
I mean, you gotta be careful there, because are you saying that our code enforcement officer can go knock on your door?
I'm asking the question.
Well, we know the answer, because we asked our lawyer.
That's good. We'll have to ask her.
Okay.
We can't go third-hand.
No.
But I highly do.
Our big driver here is we have to have the codes enforced, or else we can be named...
All we're asking for is to get our...
I highly doubt someone having a family graduation with 100 people or 500 are subject to any kind of inspection, whether they have it in their garage, their basement of their house, or in their backyard, or the barn.
A wedding in the backyard?
Or the barn they share with Kel. I mean, that's just...
It's a lot of overlapping laws in New York, so I just would be careful.
You're just... with the zoning thing, you're looking for a C.O.L. on that. That's...
Yeah.
Yeah, just for the doctor to close out the permit to say it was built as indicated.
Has Jean been out to look at your deck?
No, we were going to reach out to Jean. We just became aware that he was on board with you. So I was going to reach out to him once he got settled to come out and take a look at that. So that just became news to us that Jean was back. So the hope is we're on an agenda in the future, unless it's something that we are... I don't think there's any reason to further discuss this. And I would hope that staff, employees can be told to... this isn't something to... The amount of discussion out of this building to the public is just... that's also very concerning. Actually, no privacy whatsoever. We submitted an application for X, Y, and Z, and all of a sudden, everybody in the town knows. Or so-and-so sees the application and says to the friends, "Oh, they can't do that." And they run around and tell everybody. Some of those people are gone, but...
Some are.
Some aren't, and it's not very, very good. Not good at all. I would hate... a lot of people have a lot of private things that they do require the town to help them. They don't need their business aired out in the public. And ours has been aired out in the public for two years now. Still, even this week, I have people calling us. You never guessed what so-and-so said. Oh, guess what I heard? This gentleman here, we've never met. Just look at that. Someone's talking about us.
Realize if you have 300, 400 people that you're...
We have never, never, never.
That it would be the largest gathering in Stafford.
Steve's family gathered at a church house around the corner this summer. Had a tent up in the yard.
Oh, birthday.
Birthday party, but I didn't know it... had a big tent up front. And we really hate that we would set a precedence where we're gonna start balling around everybody's home.
And like Jeff said, we're not idiots. We're not gonna host something for 300 or 400 people. It's our home. I mean...
See, again, misconception.
Right.
Absolutely no way. No way would we ever do. I don't want that responsibility.
You'd probably be well-served to talk to the Chamber of Commerce.
We already have. We've asked it.
I mean, I'll reach out again, but I... yeah.
Unfortunately, I searched myself.
I guess don't believe everything you read on the internet.
There's a historical thing, depending on what web browser you use, that pulls old website pages from... it happened. We have websites that we've disbanded from businesses that we've had, or personal, that you can still find out there. So unfortunately, there's no complete going away. Ever tried to delete your Facebook page? Almost impossible. So that's just one example.
But I'll reach... I will reach out to him, because just to make sure.
Can I sort of ask, is Jerry gonna be talked to about this? Are you gonna take this to Jerry? Are you gonna go through the lawyer? Because it is sort of concerning. I mean, I met yous the first time I came to the Alzheimer thing with my girlfriends. I didn't even realize that was the place they were talking about, so...
I've talked to Jerry about this.
But now, now that...
In fact, I've had conversations with them almost on a daily basis about what's going on. Am I getting the right stuff? I mean...
I mean, I don't like that term of "going on." We don't have anything going on. We're just living our lives like all of you do at your homes.
We've also had some vice by legal counsel, so...
I mean, Mark has reached out to me and said that he has advised those to leave it alone. There's nothing there. They're not running a business. They're not doing it for financial gain. Last time I talked to him, he sounded kinda frustrated, so I'm gonna put you guys to...
I just think at the very least that you guys should apologize to these people. At the very least, I haven't heard one person on this board look at them and say, "I'm sorry for what you had to go through."
We've got one side of the story so far. We've got a little bit of what Jerry's...
You gotta speak up, because I can't hear.
I say, "We've got one side of the story. We've also had some legal counsel on this." So we're gonna talk to the attorney first. What he says is probably true. He's talked to Mark personally, but we'll talk to our counsel first. But if anything's wrong, yes, I'm sorry you had to go through the process, Jeff, that you had to go through, and that you didn't get the help that you wanted, which it didn't work out for you. I knew you probably wanted to do that. It's too bad it didn't work out. So we do all the guys for you for that part.
There's just one item alone in this binder, and that's the police report from the Genesee County Sheriff. Should be enough right there.
Right.
And, yeah.
I mean, that report alone should be enough for the town to apologize for their employees' behavior, because the Genesee County Sheriff isn't lying. There's not another side of the story.
And quite honestly...
That is the side of the story.
It took time.
We apologize for that part.
It took time after that happened. I... I mean, I'm a little bit more worried to begin with, but I was scared on our own property. And to be honest, I'm still a bit amped, because this is all coming out. It was one of the reasons why we were just like, "Let's just drop it. Let's just..." Don't like this ever happen, because Jerry comes across as somebody that you don't wanna mess with, I guess. Because rational people don't do the things that he did. And to us, that's... or to me, that's scary.
And he has... and it's in the police report, too. He references what he would have done in the position that he had. And Jerry's history, you might wanna look into that as well, but, you know, he was actually belligerent and disrespectful to the sergeant. And that's indicated in the police report as well. He thinks he's something he's not. The sheriff indicated that in the police report. That alone should be enough. I don't know how many residents walk in here with a police report or a town official that has treated them wrongly.
Well, I personally would like to thank you for coming in. I can only... I can only tell you one thing. I can't tell you everything. But there's a lot of things that we are doing, okay, that you're not aware of. And we can't tell you what we're doing, because we're... we have to do things in a certain order.
I understand that.
It's been happening for a number of months. I can tell you that. Okay, so it's... it's... things are happening.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. See, I didn't have to speak.
Well, we've taken up way too much of your time, but I appreciate you spending the time to listen to us.
That's what these meetings are for.
I just wish more people would come. I see that... I've heard turnout usually isn't very good, but people wanna bitch online and all that stuff, but they don't wanna...
Because of the water district, this is far more than we ever get.
Yeah, but they should have stuck around for the rest of the meeting, just to know what the function of the town... A lot of people don't know. I served on the Bioversion School Board for five years, so I know what it's like to sit there. I know what it's like to have to hear things from people like myself, good, bad, et cetera. I get that. So I appreciate the job that you do. It's, you know, not usually a pat on the back. It's usually, "What are they doing? Why are they doing this?" I didn't get paid to do the school board. That would be worse.
Again, make sure... because it just came up for me. All I did is put in your address, and it came up with a website. When I loaded the name of that into Facebook, it came right up, "Chamber of Commerce."
I know.
And it looks exactly like you're running a business.
I can assure you, Ron, that we've asked the Chamber to remove that. They may have, and like I've stated, unfortunately, there is a story...
I can... I mean, not that... not that we haven't proven anything, but I can send you the email that I sent to them months ago, when they said they were gonna, you know, that they weren't gonna...
Since you've accumulated all that evidence, is there any possibility you could leave that with us?
Not the whole binder, because it has a lot of personal notes in it also, but...
We'll make copies of the information provided to you.
Could you...
Could be great.
And I'll help you do it, because we have a copy of the police report before you go.
Sure. And I would like to know, we did make a formal complaint with the New York State Attorney General's Office in regard to his behavior, but with bureaucracy, we haven't heard anything back. We may not have heard anything back, but we provided all those documentations to them, but they have other people to go after, I guess, so...
All right. Why don't we get a copy of that?
That's your... You didn't go forward, you guys, sir?
No. I just... thank you for listening.
Thanks, Jeff.
And one other thing, just knowing that you were here. As past president of the Chamber of Commerce, if you have any problems, let me know. As past president of the Chamber of Commerce...
Oh, you are?
Please let me know.
Yeah. They're very nice, and I can reassure you that...
Is the meeting done?
No.
No.
No?
Google knows what you're doing every second of every day, and they don't forget.
It's not a new company, John. Bill are dressed to... Okay, we'll adjourn the regular meeting at 9:55, and we'll enter in a second session at the same time.